Hey, welcome everyone. Good afternoon. Thank you for joining us today as we discuss civic participation with two of our three county commissioners. Before we get started, I want to thank AARP for sponsoring our Keeping it Brief sessions, our weekly Zoom, or excuse me, our monthly Zoom conference calls to help keep us informed about different issues. So I would like to welcome Yocasta Laura from AARP. Yocasta? Ify, I think we might need to open up her mic and camera.
I think we might have lost her.
Oh, okay. Well, I'll tell you what, when you see her come back, we'll jump back to her. Let me get us started in appreciation of the time. I know she's having some difficulties with the technology. So as you know, in addition to allowing citizens an opportunity to influence policy and local priorities, strong civic engagement leads to higher levels of trust and stronger, happier communities, all things I'm sure we can all get around about. And local government has the biggest impact of all. So I am thrilled to welcome you to Keeping it Brief today. And we welcome Commissioners Bob Harvey and Diane Ellis Marsalia. We are sorry that we are not going to be able to have our third Commissioner, Jean DiGeralamo, because he had a personal emergency this morning. But we'll get to them in one moment. Before we get there, I want to make sure we have a quick note about our technology. When you join the event, your microphone and your camera were both turned off automatically, so you can see and hear us, but we cannot see or hear you. So just relax, sit back, enjoy a snack, and please learn something and offer something. We have a chat where if you click on that, you can offer some questions and the Commissioners can take. So a little bit about us, the Bucks County Women's Advocacy Coalition is a nonpartisan coalition of individuals and organizations. We're founded in 2008 and designated a nonprofit in 2015. We educate and advocate for gender equity and economic security for all. And we're thrilled to call more than 300 individuals and nearly 50 organizations our partners and try to work together so we can speak together with one voice and really make that voice more powerful to our government and other powers that be. I noticed that Yocasta has joined us. I guess we got the technology right. So please, Yocasta, we would like to show our appreciation to AARP for sponsoring today and tell us why it's so important to AARP.
Sure. Thank you so much, Maria. And yes, I am having technical issues today, but I'm back. Finger crossed that I keep myself online. And good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for participating in today's conversation, Keeping it Brief, with Bucks County Commissioners and the Civic Engagement Event. On behalf of AARP Pennsylvania and our 1.8 million members, volunteers, and staff across the Commonwealth, we are honored to collaborate with the Bucks County Women's Advocacy Coalition and to sponsor a series of community events to educate and advocate on behalf of the 50-plus community and their families. I am Yocasta Laura, as Maria mentioned, Advocacy and Community Engagement Manager with AARP Pennsylvania. And I know what you might be thinking, how is she that she's with AARP? I'm gonna leave that to the air, but I'm really proud and enjoy the work that I'm doing with AARP Pennsylvania. AARP Pennsylvania recognized that the 50-plus community, especially the 50-plus women, are our nation's most powerful voters and will be the desires in the 2022 elections. AARP is fighting for all voters 50-plus and older to make their board heard on issues that matter this year, especially with rising prices, people struggling to pay for groceries and gas. The first time that in past month, I put gas in my car, I took a picture and sent it to my husband. I couldn't believe it. It was outrage. So I'm proud that AARP is fighting on behalf not only to the 50-plus, but entire community in such an issue, dealing with the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic and retirement savings in crisis. Among the work that we are doing this year on behalf of our members and their families, I will highlight a few. Fighting to protect and strengthen the Social Security benefits Americans have paid into and earned through years of hard work. We have also worked towards Congress to protect and improve Medicare benefits. Fighting for Americans to access the healthcare they need, especially those struggling financially. Fighting to ensure every woman has the chance to save the money they need to take control of the future. Fighting to ensure over 50-plus in rural communities can get the healthcare they need and stay connected to work and family. Finally, we fought and won this year on prescription drug prices to stop pharma from ripping off seniors and taxpayers by finally allowing Medicare to negotiate prices with pharmaceutical companies. We are expecting 50-plus voter to comprise 60% to 70% of all voters in this vast majority of the 22 race, including the ones that will desire control over Congress, like our Senate and congressional race in Pennsylvania. And I want us to think about the numbers, 60% to 70% of all voters, not only in the state, but also across the country, and thinking that in 2030, the first millennial will become 50, surpassing the 18-plus age range that we have right now. So we're going to have a drastic change in our demographic in a few years. So I urge you to think about how we are doing work to make sure that the 50-plus and their family age with dignity, that we continue fighting for these issues that will help all of us to age in place. I want to thank you, Marcia Fionna, for this great collaboration, for having us today. And without further ado, I will pass the mic back. I'm sorry, my computer?
I got it from you, Yocasta.
Can you hear me? Because I froze for a moment and I was like, okay, okay. Back to Maria. I hope that you enjoyed the conversation with the Bucks County Commissioner that we also have invited then a couple of times, and I know that will be a really educational program. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Yocasta. And we're so proud to have you as one of the 50 organizations that are our partners. And just when you speak about the advocacy that you do, of course, we encourage advocacy and, as today's topic, civic engagement at all levels. So without any further ado, oh, let me back up and say that this will be taped. It's recorded as you agreed to when it came on. And we will send out the link, and you can also find the link on our website where you can also get a lot more information and links to other things that could be of value to you. And again, today's program, like other educational programs we offer, is always free while we operate efficiently. If you find that this program and the work the Coalition does is of value to you, please consider making a financial contribution, and you can get more information on that on the website as well. Now, let's bring in our Commissioners. When it comes to civic engagement, we know that local governments have more than a significant impact on the lives of all of us residents, more than the state, more than the federal government. It literally is close to home. With the ability to impact this day-to-day quality of life issues, engaging in public dialogue and decision-making is essential. So I'm so excited to welcome Commissioners Bob Harvey and Diane Ellis Marsalia to join us. So by a little background, born and raised in Bristol Borough, Commissioner Bob Harvey was elected to the Board of Bucks County Commissioners in November of 2019, sworn into office just as COVID hit, January 6, 2020, and named Chair of the Board on January 5, 2022. A lifelong resident of Bucks County and mother of two, Commissioner Diane Ellis Marsalia was first elected in November of 2007 and began her fourth term on the Board of Commissioners in January 2020. So I welcome you both, and we were teed up that perhaps the first thing we should talk about is what exactly does a Commissioner do?
I'm gonna let Diane, of course, has been a Commissioner since 2008. I'm gonna let her talk about that.
Well, we always joke that that's the most important, most frequent question we get is what do Commissioners do? There's three of us. By law, two of us are from one party, and there will always be one from another party. So we have that checks and balances kind of thing. So you know, the first 12 years I was here, I was the Minority Democratic Commissioner with two Republican Commissioners. When Commissioner Harvey and DiGeralmo were elected in 2020, that switched. And Commissioner Harvey and I have been the Majority Commissioners, although we get along very well with our Minority Commissioner and get a lot done together. Really quick, we are in charge of the jail. We have a nursing home under our jurisdiction. Children and youth follows under us. Mental health and disability programs comes under us. The Area Agency on Aging does. We are directly linked with the Drug and Alcohol Commission. We also have, I think, like 123 bridges, but no roads. And we have, I think, 20 parks. So most of you have been to Court Creek or Peace Valley. And we have a horse park up in Tinnicum. All right, Bob, and we run the elections. So except for the year that we run, we make sure that the elections are run. What did I forget that we do, Bob?
No, I think you had a lot of it. I was gonna throw out a couple of things just so people get an understanding of where we are, with the scale of the government and the involvement of that. So our budget is about half a billion dollars a year. About half of that comes from tax money. The other half of it comes from state and federal programming. So if the federal government is passing a program to help, you know, as Diane referenced, you know, something for people who are seniors, they don't physically run that program. They give the money to counties, and then we actually run the program. So it kind of, it comes to us, a lot of that funding. The two things I always touch on that I think touch people every day, and Yocasta just actually referenced this a little bit. We have a Department of Weights and Measures here in the county. And one of the things they do is they inspect every single gas pump in Bucks County every single year. So you can imagine literally going out and checking every single pump you go to. It's gonna have a stamp on it. It's gonna say, you know, Bucks County Weights and Measures. It's gonna have whatever month it was inspected punched out so that you know if you're paying for a gallon of gas, you're getting a gallon of gas. That's something that people, you know, obviously now especially are very focused on. But every restaurant you go to, any place, that includes even things like school cafeterias, you know, for hospitals, the cafeterias you have in hospitals, nursing homes, long-term care facilities, all of them are inspected by the Bucks County Health Department every year. So you see that certificate hanging up in your favorite restaurant that says it was inspected by Bucks County so you know your food is safe and the restaurant's clean. So those are things that people just never think of, and that's every single day we're touching the lives of people in Bucks County.
Okay. So when you hear from your constituents, what do they normally ask you, tell you, worry about? What's top of mind and what can you do about it at a county level?
Jeez. I don't know what's coming to Bob's mind right away, but I would say the most common call I get is mental health-related. And most of you who are on here probably know I'm a social worker, so I'm never sure if that's because that's a common problem or they just look and see I'm the social worker, and so it makes sense to reach out to me about that. A lot of times I think we get calls that aren't really county-related, so we need to direct people to where it is. Bob?
Yeah, both of us served as township supervisors in different townships. And at that level, it's interesting, we got more, or at least I did, I got more emails about, you know, traffic issues. You know, my neighbor's grass is too high, that kind of stuff. We don't really get that anymore. But I think a lot of it just depends on anything that's going on in the news or anything that's happening. Obviously, there was the issue with the potential sale to Sewer Authority over the summer. That generated a lot of interest, of course. During the pandemic, a lot of focus on how to keep people safe and vaccinations and things of that nature. More recently, it's focused on things with the election coming up. But it is interesting that one of the, I guess, you know, as we referenced, people don't necessarily know what Commissioners do. We've been trying to fix that. We've been trying to be a lot more transparent. I would argue that we're the most transparent county government ever, broadcasting our meetings now, which was never done before. An updated website that's light years better than the one that was there before so that you can get access to what's going on in the county. Trying to make sure that people know what this level of government does so they can reach out if they need something. But I think for a lot of people, they don't know necessarily what we do, so they don't know to reach out to us to address the problem.
So when you look at all that you're responsible for in Bucks County, literally, you think everybody has at least half a dozen of those things that affect them every day. How should people approach getting involved in these issues? Are there things they should look at, things that are affecting them? Are they looking at things broader? For example, elections, that's always a good one, and that's the hottest button right now. So what would you say about that? And someone just popped into the chat, heard many complaints about election Dropbox communications and dates and availabilities. So election issues, has that been front burner?
Well, sure. You know, as the elections get closer, and obviously with the change in the election law back in 2020, moving to brand-new machines, the voter marked paper ballot machines that the whole state had to go toward. Implementation of the new no-excuse mail-in voting, which changed, you know, for the first time in decades, you know, a large-scale change in the way Pennsylvanians vote. You know, those things have generated a lot of interest, a lot of curiosity, and the Dropbox references, courses. You know, there were no Dropboxes prior to 2020 because, you know, it just wasn't, didn't have that kind of voting process that you do now. And so there's still people who are just getting used to the idea of where they are, when they're open, you know, what can I take there, et cetera. But as every election gets closer, there are more and more questions. And then there's a little bit of a lull when the elections, you know, because we have elections, one in the spring, one in November. So twice a year, we'll see a little spike in questions and comments and concerns among people.
So can I back up a little bit? How do you define civic engagement? I mean, is it, I know when I see it, here's what it looks like, here's what I'd like it to look like?
Diane? I'll just jump in. I guess, well, I see it as people deciding that they want to do something to better their community. Sometimes, some people do a whole lot of things. They get involved in a lot of committees. Sometimes it's smaller. They just make sure they vote every year, but it's doing anything to try to better your community.
Yeah, I'd say the same thing. It's really echoing Diane's comments. You know, democracy does require, you know, people, citizens, to be educated, to be involved to some extent. In some case, maybe the civic engagement is just, you know, following along, just knowing what's going on in your community. Could be civic engagement, just being aware of the issues and the decisions that are being made and the debates that are happening.
Okay. Is there something that you can do as Commissioners to help further that civic engagement? You talked about making your meetings public, getting a website that was more effective and useful to people. Is there anything we should, that you can do or that we should be doing or asking you to do? Does that make sense?
You know, I just want to, I'll throw this part in here, just because voting is probably the simplest part of engaging with people. And I teach a class at the Community College, and I teach it in social work where I expect anybody who takes my class is registered to vote, right? They care about social change. And once again, this year, I only had two students who were registered to vote. So, you know, I always ask why. And, oh, it doesn't really affect me. I don't think they really count the ballots right. And then I compare that to, I'm sure Bob's kids, my kids, and probably everybody on here. My daughter would vote before she even remembered to get me a Christmas present. Like, that's how ingrained it is in her mind. We're missing something that that's not being handed down, you know. I shouldn't be teaching a 23-year-old that you're supposed to vote. Bob's a history teacher. He may have a better idea on that, but it's gotta start much earlier.
Yeah, I think that when I was running for this position, and one of the things that motivated me was I felt that this level of government is, you know, a level that is important. It does a lot of really, really necessary work. And it was a level of government that was largely invisible. And that bothered me. I didn't like the fact that this was a level that nobody knew what they did. And when no one really knows what you're supposed to do and no one's watching. You know, certainly there was work being done, and it was good work, but, you know, I kind of felt like there were people just sort of, you know, doing the bare minimum in some cases because there's no one to hold them, to make them accountable, because no one knows what you're supposed to do anyway. So I wanted to sort of shine a light on this level of government. And COVID did that, wasn't really my intention, but COVID really shined a light on what the county does in many ways. But again, being more transparent, we did town halls during the pandemic to try and talk about things that were happening. We've done a lot of outreach to municipalities through the different agencies and tried to help them. We've unfortunately had some natural disasters, flooding and tornadoes over the past couple of years as well that have kind of put us more in the forefront. The elections has put us in the forefront. So in some ways, it's, you know, we're getting what we asked for in terms of the attention. But I do think it's important to have, it's like a civic class, really. This is a level of government that does affect you.
I would also just add that one of the things I think sometimes anybody here, and each of us, can help people connect with county government is find out what somebody's interested in. I was just remembering, geez, we do the whole 911 system. So if somebody's interested in criminal justice, we've got that. If somebody's interested in mental health issues, we've got that. So you get that teachable moment where you can tell them what local government really is and why it's important to them.
Diane, how did you get from township supervisor to county commissioner? Bob explained a little bit about what he saw as an opening for doing good and being more visible about it. What made you make that jump so many years ago?
Well, somebody asked me, so that's what gave me the confidence to be able to do it. I wouldn't have thought that I had the confidence on my own. But the truth is, as a social worker, you know, we take a vow. You're supposed to do micro-change and macro-change. And after all the decades I've been working in Bucks County, you know, with families, I saw things that needed to be changed. And so this would be my opportunity to work on that macro-change.
Wow. Thank you so much. So are there groups out there, I mean, you know, Women's Advocacy Coalition aside, are there other groups that are helpful to you or that you work with regularly that you count on for support or they count on you for support? You know, who are the natural allies and who are your allies that, gee, we'd love to get them active or more interested?
There's a lot of nonprofit partners we work with who help us carry out our work. You know, the work of the county, the Opportunity Council is a major one. You know, both the YMCA, the YWCA, you know, the United Way, you know, does a lot. I'm trying, you know, there's too many to mention, and that's the thing, you're always gonna forget, you know, somebody, somewhere. But there are a host of nonprofits that do everything from, we have NAMI, which is working on mental illness. We have, you know, Buck's Beautiful that works on environmental issues and, you know, leave conservation voters and things of that nature. So it really runs the gamut. I was at a meeting a few weeks ago of the Bicycle Coalition that is pushing for more trails, more bike trails all over southeastern PA. So, you know, as Diane said, if there's, we do deal with almost every issue you can imagine. And so if there's an issue that you're interested in, there's probably an organization out there focused on it, and we're probably connected with them in some way.
And before anybody gets upset, I saw Bucks for Kids in there, Nancy Taylor, which we're and Julie Dees, I see you there, Family Service does the shelter and a whole bunch of other family services for us.
That's wonderful. And that's the thing, there's so many people doing so many things. And it sounds like we should really think, maybe, tell me if you feel this way, that the Commissioners are a hub where you can kind of, you know, the spokes go out everywhere and from all different, you know, all of this list of things that you're responsible for, as well as all the partners that can be involved in those. So it seems like you'd be a great place to start when anyone needs answers. Does that make sense?
It's a good segue to talk about the hub.
There you go.
Actually, yes, the hub was something that, you know, I think most of us who have been involved with social services wish the county had, like a one-stop shop where people could just call. So I guess it was about a year and a half ago, we opened the hub, and now we just added a second employee. So that's how much it's been used. We had someone from the hub at our meeting today talking about the amount of Ukrainian refugees that they're seeing. We're up to three and four families a week who are coming in and need assistance. They are eager to find housing here, but more important, they want to work. But it costs, I think, $410 to get a work permit, and so someone has to sponsor them. So they're helping them sign up for things, but also, you know, we tried to help them and help immigrants, immigrant rights action to be able to get sponsors and money to be able to sponsor these folks. But you could call the hub for mental health referrals. You could call, if you're out of oil, like, they will find an answer for you.
Well, segued, good. Thank you. All right. I just want to take a couple of the questions that have been asked here. So can you explain the new sign, this is going back to elections, again, hot button. Can you explain the new sign-in machine? Will it be at the polls in the coming election? Why is it necessary?
Or we can talk about that. Yeah, so the county last year and this year as well did research into what are called e-poll books. So anybody that's gone to vote at polls, you know, there's a giant book that has your name in it. Sometimes there's two books. You have to get in different lines based on your last name. And then they flip through and they find it, and you sign your name, et cetera. So that's obviously a pretty antiquated process. Around the country, for in some cases, six, seven, eight years now, counties and states have been using essentially tablets that have the same information but are much more inexpensive. The county prints about 27,000 pages per election because the county prints those poll books. So it takes a couple of weeks for, and it's one or two employees, and that's literally all they do is they print poll books and bind them and get them ready to be sent out. And then following the election, most people don't realize that we have to go through every single poll book and verify every single voter who voted and signed in that poll book. So think about the presidential election where you had, you know, several, a couple hundred thousand people who voted. We had to go through every poll book for all 304 precincts and literally with a little barcode scanner, scan every single name to make sure they had voted and make sure it verifies all the numbers. That literally takes until like January for our staff to do that. So it's incredibly time-consuming. It's wasteful in terms of environmental resources. The e-poll books are used across the country, specifically the ones we're getting used. Are used in blue and red states around the country. Half of Texas uses the e-poll books that we're going to be using, as do some counties in California and a lot of counties in New York. Washington DC uses them, Kansas, Indiana, you know, most states really kind of use this system. And some of them have used them since 2014. So we're a little late to the party. There are about 16 other counties in Pennsylvania that use poll books, e-poll books of some type. From, you know, counties close to us like Berks to counties far away, like Washington County. Again, red and blue counties, and they've used them for a couple of years now. So we did pilot these in a few precincts in the last couple of elections. We did pilot these with our local staff or with some of our poll workers, and they met with rave reviews. People love them. For those that might work in the polls or perhaps know somebody who does, one of the biggest challenges we face is it's starting around 7:00 AM on Election Day. The phones start ringing in our Board of Elections office, and they don't stop until 8:00. And most of those calls are calls from judges of election who have a voter who's come into their precinct who isn't in the book but knows they're registered to vote, just doesn't know where they're supposed to go. So now the judge of elections has to call to Doylestown. Somebody in the Board of Elections has to look them up in the computer system, relay the information back to the judge of elections. This is where this person's supposed to go. Give them an address. It literally finds a slip of paper to write it on and hand it to them. These e-poll books will have every voter in Bucks County listed. So if you end up going, Evans, and I think I'm supposed to vote here, and you're not actually supposed to vote there, they can look you up and tell you right away, oh, you're supposed to be at the school. Then the street. So that's gonna be a huge time saver for our staff, for the judges of elections and their staff at polls. And at the end of the, yeah, yes, less phone ringing. And it really, at the end of, when the system's done, essentially, these tablets, which are not connected to the internet, you know, they basically, just like I've had, you know, it's the same thing, same concept. They are, they can be, you know, uploaded, all the data uploaded. And so that hand beeping of every single voter at 304 precincts, that doesn't have to happen. Same process can be done, you know, much more rapidly.
All right. And plus, reduce frustration and hopefully increase competence, right? Not having three people relay something to you.
Just real quick to stop any rumors, because rumors with new things always start getting everyone's attention. They are not hooked up to the internet. There is no Social Security number in that database. And your voter registration information is considered public. So that information is available to you. If you just go down to our Board of Elections with 20 bucks, they'll give you the information on everybody in the whole county. So there's no secrets in those machines, nothing to be worried about that way. They'll give you the information on everybody in the whole county. So there's no secrets in those machines, nothing to to be worried about that way.
Well, I just wanted, I know we're gonna need to wrap up in about ten minutes or so. So. Before we do, I just want to pick up on a question that if he's, if he's posed, which I think is fabulous, because you worked, as you said. Because of Covid and twenty twenty and everything else, been really thrust into the spotlight. Everyone at least knows. Who you are, if they don't know what you do, they know, they know who to, who to uh, either cheer or complain about. What are one of the two things that you are particularly proud of or that you felt were really managed well?
Diane, wanna go first?
I know, I want. I have more time to think about.
Yeah, okay, okay. Um, I did, I cheated. I saw the question earlier, so I've been thinking about, um.
I mean, you both came to make a difference. You've made differences. So which of those differences really stand out to you?
I, you know, I think that first year, um. Feeling obviously with Covid, um, the worst pandemic in a hundred years. You know, legitimately, not exaggerating, not hyperbole, and the twenty twenty election, I, again, being the history teacher for a long time. Was the most contentious election in a hundred and fifty years, really since the end of the Civil War. Um, you know, going through that, you know, I I think, well, certainly we can't say we were perfect. Um, I I think the job we did, particularly with the election, um, you know, we ended up getting sued about eleven times. By one of the political parties and one of, one of the political campaigns. Um, and we won all eleven lawsuits. And eventually, one of the attorneys for uh, a, a former president had to admit in court, because the judge asked him. What evidence do you have of fraud in Bucks County? He had to say none. Uh, and so that, that, you know, made me very proud of, of, and this was, again, brand-new procedures, brand-new policies, brand-new machines, brand-new laws with voting. Um, in many ways, creating policies here to implement uh, what the state had created. Uh, and um. I'm particularly proud of the staff we had and and all the hours they put in. One of those things, like, I was glad I went through it. I would really not like to do it again. But uh, and then with the pandemic, I, I know there were people that weren't happy with every step we took. Um, there was a lot of fear, there was a lot of uh, concern, a lot of people scared, and and that was understandable. And we certainly, we were scared too. Uh, but um, you know, I, we, we really rested all our decisions on science. We rested our decisions on, on the statistics that we had coming from our health department. Most people don't know that our health department did more contact tracing than any other health department in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
Did not know that.
For the first six or seven months. Uh, and so we, we were, we were making drawing conclusions about the virus that. Um, other national agencies were coming up with after us, because we already had sort of hypersensitive data. So. And that's how we made our decisions about things. Um, trying to do the best we could. Trying to keep as many things open as we could, uh, trying to keep some normality where we knew it was safe to do that. So that's really the, the two things I'm really proud of.
I'll just jump in, and I think, um, the three of us worked really hard in terms of. The fallout from Covid. We started to see a lot of the cracks in our jail system, in the mental health system. And we responded to it, and now we have tried to put, make sure we put some of those recovery dollars in there, so that we are building a forensic center. For people who would end up in the jail but have a mental health problem. We're gonna build a crisis and stabilization center that the whole county. We started a coresponders program, which might be one of the things that I'm most proud of. So. I think we found a way together to work to fix some of the problems that were in there that Covid allowed us to fix.
You mean the Covid, like, brought to the forefront?
It brought to the forefront and it gave us some of the missing funding that had been missing before, you know, and it be. That, those weaknesses showed up because of Covid, so.
Great. Anything else that you want to highlight? And or ask everyone, what would you like everyone on this call to do as a result of our conversation today?
Yeah. Well, I, I looked, I just see the most, the most recent question, Joanna, um, and I think it gets into something we had talked a bit before about, before the, before we went live here. Um, you know, we see it, we had a meeting today, commiserates meeting today, we've seen it over the past, well, year especially, but especially the past couple of months. Um, the level of misinformation and disinformation uh, that exists. And, you know, it's, it's a struggle, especially someone kind of going back again, just. You know, I, I always tried to teach my students about how to, you know, examine things critically and and. You know, look for truth, because there is truth in, in the world. Um, you know, not just the truth you want to hear, uh, but there's actual truth. Um, and trying to be sure that whatever decisions you're making, you're making based on good information. And unfortunately, in our society, with the, the number of cable news networks and websites and social media platforms. Uh, it's easier for people to find the sources of information that they want to see. Uh, which isn't necessarily the truth, but it, it makes them feel better. Uh, and I think that's always something to be on guard for. I don't know the magic solution to that. I like to think that. If I see something pop up, if it seems too perfect. You know, if it, if it seems like it fits talking points of one side or the other, just way, way too closely. Uh, too perfectly, then it probably isn't accurate. It's probably exaggeration of some kind. Um, and to, and to always look for multiple sources when you're looking at things, you know. Um, and just be on the lookout for that, just be on guard for that.
May I also ask you a question about schools? Because there's a question in chat that I think we do need to address. And it's how can commissioners affect certain Bucks County school district policies on banned books, restricting teacher speech regarding sexual orientation and gender identity? What can you do? How can you impact that?
First of all, we cannot do anything to schools, with schools, you know. A lot of people thought that we should have the schools closed or open or wear masks or don't wear masks during Covid. But we have nothing to do with schools. It really is up to the school boards. So it's real important that the best thing we can do is get people to vote when there's a school board election. But we will try to be role models. We have a library. Um, our library board has been approached on book banning issues and, you know, we are. Hoping that we will be able to maintain a non-book banning approach through that board and that. You know, we'll stand tall and schools will want to stand tall with us. Bob?
Yeah, I mean, I certainly, somebody who's, again, spent a lifetime and Diane and I both spent lifetimes in classrooms and schools and working with schools. Um, you know, it's, it's offensive to me on, on many, many levels. Um, you know, the kind of policies we're seeing in a couple of our school districts. Um, that seem to be more really focused on indoctrination instead of education. Um, you know, and that's, uh, it, but there, there is a limit to what we can do, uh, except encourage people to pay attention. Uh, encourage them to really think about, you know, if you're restricting somebody's rights, because they don't like, they don't make you feel good, well. You know, you know, if there's, and you know, I said this at our last commissioners meeting, it's a couple of weeks ago, if, if there's a book that you don't like or, or you don't want your kids to read, then. There's a solution. Don't read it. You know, um.
Which has always been their right, from my understanding, it's always, it's right.
Yeah, exactly. If you don't want your kids to read the book, then just, you know, if you've, if you've raised your kids the way you think they should be raised, and whenever that's. Your decision, but had to do that, they're probably not gonna read anyway. But maybe there's another parent who wants their kid to read that book. So what right do you have to take that away? Um, so that's. Like I said, I think Diane put it well. All we can do really is try to be role models and, and try to, I guess, bang the drums so that people are focusing on the issue.
Okay. What else can we do? Obviously, it sounds like we should be starting to go to the school board meetings and making sure, again, to vote in those elections. Anything else, um, closing remarks that you would like to make sure that we do today? Is there, should everybody hop on the website and see, kind of scroll around a little and see what, uh, they didn't know that you all did? And possibly could help them or a friend with?
Yeah, well, we certainly take a look at all the departments we have and the agencies. We did do, when Diane and I were first elected, we commissioned a transition team. About seventy volunteers, uh, who, from all over the county, who took a look at county government. And put together a hundred and fifty-three page report, uh, that they delivered to us in June of twenty twenty. We posted that on the website. Uh, and just this past June, we posted a progress report. Um, about, you know, how we're doing on some of the things they recommended that we do. And we've mentioned some of them. With, uh, you know, mental health and the hub and, um, you know, other issues that we're trying, the, the website itself was one of the things they recommended changing. So some of them are work in progress, uh, like everything else. Um, in life, there's always things you can do better. So we're gonna keep doing that. And I think just being on this call, obviously, I mean, I, you know, in many ways, I'm sure we're preaching to the choir, uh, to, and a lot of this, but, um. Just don't be afraid to be that voice in, in the wilderness, you know, because somebody, somebody needs to hear you.
And I would just add that there are a lot of women on this call, and this is a really important election for women. Uh, like, I really can't believe that I've seen myself get rights and have them taken away in my lifetime. It, it's just crazy. So. I would encourage you, take five women to vote with you. Take men who love women to vote with you. It is really. Really the time that women have to make a difference.
Okay, on that note, I think I'll, I'll wrap up. Everyone knows where to find you, which is great. I want to thank you both, Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I want to remind everyone that you can join us again next month, the first Wednesday of every month at one thirty for another forty-five minute conversation to help broaden our horizons and get us. With specific tasks that we can do to make our communities a better place. Thank you all for joining us.
Thank you.